We have a city council meeting in June 25, 2012. Please welcome the president.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The city clerk please take role.
Davis Reinhardt.
Here.
Bud Starker.
Present.
Joyce J.
Here.
Mike Stice.
Here.
George Pond.
Present.
Joseph Demott.
Present.
Tracy Langworthy.
Kristy Davis.
Here.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of June 11, 2012?
So moved.
Second.
You have a motion for approval, seconded by Mr. Starker, discussion on the minutes. Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you, we have a few proclamations tonight, I'm gonna run down to the podium. Before we move on tonight, I wanted to ask me to join me in a moment of silence. On behalf of the city of Wheat Ridge and its citizens, I would ask everyone to join me in a moment of silence to reflect upon the ultimate sacrifices made by Inglewood Police Officer Jeremy Bitner and Denver Police Officer Selena Hollis, both of whom died in line of duty serving to keep their communities safe. Please join me in this moment of silence to remember these police officers, their families and loved ones, and the members of our law enforcement communities who continue to serve their communities in spite of inherent dangers. We have two proclamations tonight, actually we have, Janice, would you please step forward? Is Anna Lozari here? Ann, please step forward. We're gonna honor Anna Lozari, she's been our minispecialist in the city for 15 years, and we have some flowers for her and also a card. Hi Ann, how are you?
Hi.
Anna Lozari has been the minispecialist for the city of Wheat Ridge for nearly 15 years, and has recorded nearly 4,000 hours and has taken minutes for several boards and commissions, including the Planning Commission, the Board of Adjustment, Wheat Ridge Housing Authority, Urban Renewal, Parks and Recreation, as well as several ad hoc committees, including the Dirt Task Force and the Citizens Budget Oversight Committee. Ann has also filled in for the city at city clerk and city council meetings. Ann has assisted the community development department on many occasions, including covering the Ministry of Assistance Desk in her absence. Ann has been very reliable and consistent preparing meeting minutes in a timely fashion with very little editing required by staff. So Ann's gonna retire from this profession, and so let's give her a round of applause.
Wow.
We're gonna put you on the minutes now.
I just want to say that it's been an interesting 15 years, and it's been fun to see all the progress that's been made. I've got to see a lot of things happen. As I told the Planning Commission the other night, I'm paid to do this, and I really admire those of you that volunteer your time to better your community. I guess that's about all I have to say.
Well, thank you, Ann, your comments will be recorded in the minutes very accurately tonight by our city clerk. So can I give you this?
Sure, thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Come on up, Dave. Dave will be in the Summer Olympic Games, he's a Wheat Ridge native?
Yes. Thank you.
I'm gonna read a proclamation here, and we're gonna ask Dave to step up and say a few words. This is a proclamation supporting David Herman in the 2012 Summer Olympic Games, whereas Wheat Ridge resident David Herman will be participating in the London Olympic Games to be held in London, England, on August 12, 2012, August 2012, and whereas David has placed fifth in 2012 in the UCI BMX World Championships in Bingham, England, qualifying him for the Olympic Games, and whereas he has earned his way onto a number of teams that the United States has dispatched to World Cup events around the globe, and whereas he was one of 14 of the nation's finest BMX racers selected to take part in the elite BMX camp at the Olympic Training Center in Southern California, and whereas David is representing the United States, the state of Colorado, and the city of Wheat Ridge, we wish him the best of luck and success in London. Now therefore be resolved by I, Jerry Natulio, Mayor and the City of Wheat Ridge City Council, support David Herman's goal to be the best in the sport, and wish him continued success at the 2012 Summer Olympic Games. Congratulations.
Thank you for having me here tonight, it's a great honor to be here and to be recognized by the city of Wheat Ridge. You know, I can't say how proud I am to have grown up in Wheat Ridge and to be representing Wheat Ridge at the Olympics this summer, as well as the United States of America. As he has already said, I'm a BMX racer, which many confuse with freestyle, but actually it's racing, and we race eight at a time, and you know, we'll be racing the 7th, 8th, and 9th of August, and hopefully you guys can check it out, and maybe I can make it back here with a gold medal.
Thank you, we'll move on to citizens' right to speak. Citizens who wish to speak may speak on any matter not on the agenda for a maximum of three minutes, so please step forward and spell your last name for the record.
Thank you, good evening again, Mo Kelller, K-E-L-L-E-R, and I live at 4325 Iris Street in Wheat Ridge, and I wanted to thank all of you for giving us a little bit more time and a little bit more ability to have input in terms of the concept of the draft ordinance for the special permit for amplified sound, and we are happy to participate in the solution to the draft, and we're happy to work with Mr. Marriott and with other business leaders to hopefully craft language that will not be contested, that everyone can agree to live with. I did want to mention that the noise ordinance as currently configured does allow live bans, it does not prohibit that. What we're talking about, and really the only difference between the special use permit concept and the noise ordinance is a matter of volume. It's a volume issue, it isn't necessarily to have a ban, any business could have a ban any night as long as the volume is not disturbing to the neighbors. So we're happy to be involved and we're offering to do that, so please do call upon us, and you have some of our initial thoughts already, but we're happy to work with Mr. Marriott and the other businesses to craft something for the July 2 study session. So thank you for letting us have that time.
Oh, and Mo, it was clear that I had asked the folks to speak, to voluntarily not speak if they wanted to, wait till this time to speak, that was the understanding, you had to? They could either speak at the public comment for the study session or here.
I didn't think it was an either-or, I thought it was both.
Right, both, they could do both, right.
That was my understanding.
Or voluntarily wait for one or the other.
Well, people volunteer all the time for certain things, but my understanding was that the rule allowed for three minutes on the study session and three minutes for the general. I wasn't sure if that was right, but I do believe that that was the case, yeah.
Thank you.
Laura Jenkins, J-E-N-K-I-N-S, 9715 West 43rd Avenue. Again, thank you for letting us speak, this is my first experience at the city council. I did want to point one other thing out, I really do support this special, whatever you want to call it, audible sound ordinance, because I do think it will afford me as a homeowner protection, and in this weekend, in the times that I got out in this excruciating heat, I did take the ordinance to several friends of mine who are local businesses, because I support my local business. They have a business in a strip concept, kind of like Mr. Demott's, and so one of their concerns was that perhaps they have a business next door to them which isn't necessarily amenable to the kind of clientele that they have. For instance, a mixed martial arts next door to a feed store, not exactly the kind of, you know, guys that go to the feed store, but they decide to have a band. Well, that might be a good thing, but the business next door at the feed store would like to be assured that they have some sort of protections too, so that the guys at the mixed martial art place don't decide every single weekend to try and have an event, so that when I'm trying to go there to get my kitty cat food, to get my bird seed, that I can't get in, or again, I'm assaulted in my ears of not necessarily the kind of music that I want to listen to. So I think our neighborhood has done a very good job in trying to be reasonable with the particular situation that is going on with us. We just felt since we seem to be kind of the guinea pig neighborhood, that it was important for people to hear what's happening to us, and that other neighborhoods who may be affected by this in other districts can have a chance to come and speak about, yes, they live four blocks away and they don't really want to hear, you know, X kind of music, and we all should have our opportunities to be for things and against things and just let you know where we stand. So again, thank you.
Stephen Gillespie, Wheat Ridge Fire Department, 3880 Uplum. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening, it's good to be here before you this evening, as well as our guests in attendance. We would just like to announce that the 2011 annual report has been released, we finally received it from the publication, we dropped copies off to the city clerk, so if it hasn't already been disseminated to the council and other members of staff, you'll soon be receiving that shortly. For those in attendance who are watching at home, they can access the website at www.fire.org and have the online version of the annual report, and as always, if members of the council or the community have any questions about the ongoings of the fire district, either from information they've read or ascertained from the annual report, or just general curiosity, feel free to give us a call, 303-403-5900, and we will definitely answer your questions, and just spend as much time as we can with you or you need to answer those questions, so everybody has a clear understanding who we are, what we do for this community day in and day out. With that said, as we enter the July 4 holiday, as everybody knows, there's a lot of concern with the dryness and the red flag warnings, and the various bans that have been applied by the governors of fire districts or whatever it may be. So at this time, I'd like to bring up our fire marshal assistant, Chief Kelly Brooks, so he can talk about the applicability of the governor's ban, our ban, and how that relates to the community, because there seems to be a lot of confusion in trying to decipher some of that. So without further ado, Chief Brooks.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name's Kelly Brooks, Wheat Ridge Fire Protection District, BROKS, 3880 Uplum Street, I'm the fire marshal with the Wheat Ridge Fire Protection District. I thought it was important to take a few moments to talk about fire safety in the city of Wheat Ridge and the Wheat Ridge Fire Protection District, and how that relates to the current ban that's been in place, put in place through a directive by the governor of the state of Colorado. First and foremost, I think it's really important to point out that most of us consider Wheat Ridge to be a very suburban and even urban community, however, I'd like to point out that we have significant areas within our city and within our fire district that have the potential for a significant fire event. Most importantly is the green belt, we have hundreds of homes that border that green belt, and there is the potential for a significant fire event that would impact those homes. So when we talk about fire restrictions and fire bans, it's important to realize that that does have a substantial effect on the city of Wheat Ridge and the Wheat Ridge Fire Protection District, and therefore deserves our consideration substantially. So as that relates to the governor's ban, the Wheat Ridge Fire Protection District, as well as the Arvada Fire Protection District that covers a substantial portion of the city of Wheat Ridge, as well as the Jefferson County, which Wheat Ridge Fire Protection District covers some of that area as well. In an effort to be consistent, we are interpreting the ban in place by the governor in the same fashion. That includes a ban on, the rule of, the best rule of thumb is if you can turn something on or off, then that is permissible. In other words, if you have a grill that you can turn on or off, that's permissible. If you have a fireplace, outdoor fireplace that you can turn on and off, that is permissible. If it's a, with regard to, we get a lot of questions about chimeneas and patio fireplaces and things like that. If it's temporary, if it's a temporary chimenea or it's a fire pit that's movable, those are considered part of the ban and are not acceptable. If it's a permanent fireplace, patio fireplace, or it's an indoor fireplace, those are acceptable. I'm running out of time here, but I'd love to answer any additional questions that anybody has with regard to the interpretation of the fire ban and how it impacts us here in Wheat Ridge. You can call the fire department at 303-403-5915, that's my direct line, or as the chief said, you can visit our website and we have additional information on there. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, thanks for having me, again, John Marriott, M-A-R-R-I-O-T-T, my business is at 4715 Kipling Street, and in Wheat Ridge, and I want to talk on another subject here at the city council meeting. I was pretty dismayed this week to see an advertisement by the Jefferson County Health Department appearing to put the screws to the elected officials in the city of Wheat Ridge about stiffer no-smoking policies than the current state law, which, you know, everybody follows. My first reaction to it was, what an incredible waste of our taxpayers' money with the current health issues that the Health Department needs to deal with, that using money like this seemed absolutely absurd. I've come to find out that the money they're using is some money that they received as part of the tobacco settlement, which makes me even a little bit more dismayed, because my thought of that tax, of the taxes collected by the tobacco settlement was for the, to pay for some of the costs incurred by smokers, so smokers, you know, incur some health costs, lay them on the rest of us, the tobacco companies were asked to contribute to the costs they were causing. And I think it's a bit of a stretch for the, our taxpayer-funded entity like the Health Department to interpret that as they can use that in a public relations matter to try to force anti-smoking beliefs on the community. Now, myself, I'm not a smoker, my business doesn't allow smoking, doesn't depend on smoking, or have anything to do with it, I kind of don't have a dog in the fight here, except it comes down to a freedom issue. It comes down to forcing, using taxpayer dollars to force the citizens to act in a certain way, when that certain act is probably not detrimental to anybody else. A good example, if somebody's smoking in the park, you can move. I mean, I don't know what the distance that you have to be away from a smoker to make you happy, but you ought to be able to achieve that in a park, for Christ's sake, I mean, 10 feet, 100 feet, 500 feet, it seems absurd to dictate this kind of thing as an incremental way of banning tobacco overall, I think if the people who are against tobacco use, they ought to take the thing on head-on and try to do that. I would suggest that the proponents, and I know there are proponents of this kind of thing and this kind of action by cities, I'm obviously not one of them, but I would suggest that the proponents of this type of an action should do this a grassroots way. I think there's a well-established process, which I've been in, I've taken part in before here, of petitioning the residents of the city and putting initiative on the ballot and having the residents vote on it. I would encourage the people who are of this mind to exercise their rights and privileges under governance within the city of Wheat Ridge and do that, and I would encourage the Jefferson County Health Department and any other taxpayer-funded entity to use the money wisely and not be using it for public relations, to try to particularly put the squeeze on all of you sitting up there, you guys have enough other things to deal with without having that come down on you, so, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else for a public comment on any, or not on the agenda?
May I say something?
Sure.
First of all, you're leaving, but I wanted to thank the people who testified, or not testified, I don't think that would be quite the right word, for speaking to give us an idea of your feelings, Joe, and Steve, and Laura, and John, as well. I think this is a big decision, and every bit of this information, to me, is quite valuable, so thank you.
Yes, I wanted also to respond to some of the comments under public comment under the same forum. Over the weekend, I had emailed the entire ordinance to Mo Kelller, and we had talked about a public comment and when to talk under public comment, because it was my understanding that we would follow council rules and decorum and have a study session and talk about this in a, you know, a professional manner, and then move on to, maybe possibly adding it to first reading, and then those folks who had heard the discussion by city council, the pro and the con, could actually respond to actually items that were discussed by the council members, who ultimately have to make the final decision. But what I wanted to talk to the public about is that the ordinance I sent to Mo Kelller, section 11-231 is all new code, and sections A through J are the new sections, and I wanted to address one comment about this being full of holes. Actually, the city attorney and the police chief wanted us to move away from decimal readings because they can be fought in court and they're subjective, so what we had in here was item GH, "The police department shall have the authority to acquire the permits to reduce the sound volume, curtail the hours of the event, or close the event entirely if the department determines the event. Evalued at the property of the line of location, constitutes an unreasonable burden on the surrounding neighborhood which is inconsistent with the event described in the permit application or is in violation of the permit condition." So I would really encourage you folks to read that section thoroughly for the study session on July 2. Thank you. Moving on to approval of the agenda, it's my understanding that we have some changes tonight. First of all, because we're gonna have a July 2 study session, would council unanimously like to pull item number nine? Does anybody have a problem with pulling item number nine? Okay, item nine will be pulled. The other thing that we have to do tonight is items five and six are actually a public hearing, per the city manager and the city attorney, so we will hear five and six together. I talked to the city attorney, we can open up public hearings for items five and six as a public hearing, so Ms. Davis, she'll have to introduce five and six under one public hearing, we'll have the applicant speak, motions, discussion, everything under one public hearing, so. Does anybody have a problem with item five and six being heard under the public hearing section? Great. So that'll, the agenda will stand as discussed, Ms. Shaver, do you need any clarification on how the agenda will go tonight, since you don't have minutes, or the recorder's not working?
It'll be after number two, right?
Right, we'll have number one and two, then five and six. Mr. Pond?
Just so that all notification requirements have been met?
Right.
To have a public hearing?
Right.
That's true.
It's just in the wrong part of the agenda, so we're covered on publication. Okay, the next item on the agenda is public hearings and ordinance on second reading. I'm gonna open the public hearing, council member Starker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to introduce item number one. This is council bill number 09 of 2012, an ordinance amending various sections of chapter 26 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning zoning to regulate group homes for the handicapped and to bring human informity to certain residential group home zoning requirements and substance abuse clinic zoning requirements. At issue is the following. The city's current zoning regulations set forth in chapter 26 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws treat group homes of any number of unrelated handicapped individuals living together as a family. Group homes of any size for such individuals may therefore locate in the same zone districts in which single-family dwelling is permitted use without a formal review or application process. City staff believes the location of larger group homes of any type in residential districts without a review process could result in land use impacts that are incompatible with the surrounding properties. The city attorney's office has advised it is permissible but not required under state and federal law to regulate the zoning of group homes for handicapped, including imposing a numeric limitation on the size of such homes. Staff therefore recommended the preparation of this ordinance to create zoning regulations for residential group homes for the handicapped, and to make all residential group home zoning regulations generally consistent.
The city clerk, please assign an ordinance number?
This will be ordinance number 1512.
Thank you.
Can't turn it on. Where is it?
Mr. Goff, we have two terminals out, two screens?
It's the, should be the one on the far right. There it goes. Somebody turned it. Something.
Mr. Johnstone?
Thank you, Mayor, council. We are here tonight to consider ZOA 1203. It's an ordinance that we've initiated to modify the city's regulations pertaining to group homes in the zoning code. This is a topic that's not been discussed by council since 1996, which was the last and most recent update to that, those sections of the zoning code pertaining to group homes. There has been 16 years go by since that time, so we did initiate this at staff recommendation to take a look at whether the current regulations are a good fit. Because we had received some inquiries for some potentially fairly large group homes in single-family residential neighborhoods, we did take the extra caution, and city council did approve a moratorium to the processing of any applications for group home permits, licenses, et cetera. So that was initiated back on April 16th, and that will expire on July 16th. We talked about this at a study session a week or so ago, to get your informal input. We did also have a planning commission hearing just recently, and we'll summarize their recommendation that they're forwarding to you on the ordinance as well. And of course, this evening is the city council public hearing. And again, the timing has been drafted such that if council chooses to take action tonight, the ordinance would go into effect within the, before the lapsing of the moratorium on July 16th. By real summary, the existing regulations, they treat group homes for elderly and group homes for children as a permitted use in all residential zoning districts if it's eight or fewer residents. There are some real minor performance, additional performance requirement that pertain to screening of dumpsters. There's a separation requirement of 750 feet between group homes for the elderly. Group homes for protected classes, and that's a term that's defined in federal fair housing law, those are considered, in our current regulatory framework, are permitted use in all residential zoning districts regardless of the size. So that's really the policy issue that we have teed up for council to discuss and consider in terms of amending the ordinance, should all group homes, including group homes that apply to protected classes, be treated in the same way in the zoning code. That's really what we're proposing to you, is that we think that makes some sense. Again, the protected class refers to federally protected handicap populations, those people which have physical or mental impairments that substantially impair major-like life activities. It would include things such as people that are recovering from drug and alcohol addiction. It would include people that are suffering dementia or Alzheimer's in their later years as well. So the Federal Fair Housing Act as amended does require that cities not impose additional barriers to those types of group home facilities for those populations, and make reasonable accommodations for group homes in protected class in residential districts. We did some real basic research between my staff and also our legal team as to what would be appropriate. And what we really, I think, found out is that it's permissible, but not required, to further regulate group homes through zoning. We think the case law and the research that we conducted also supports the fact that there can be a limitation on the number of residents. So again, right now, we have no limitation on the number of residents in a group home for a protected class. The case law would suggest that other jurisdictions have successfully defended some sort of numerical limit. We found it defensible in that research, that the threshold of eight seemed to be a good number from a legal standpoint, which is part of the reason that eight is the threshold that we're proposing. The group homes would go from a use-by-right to a use-by-special review, or special use. We also did research of other front-range cities, Lakewood, Denver, Arvada, and interestingly, there really is a lot of consistency in that number eight for those other cities. So a number of those put the cap as a permitted use at eight, and then nine or more kicks into some other process. In some cities, it's just not a permitted use. In Lakewood, for instance, from nine to 12, it's a special use, and there's different additional performance standards in that category. And then 12 and more are not allowed at all. So other cities, I think, do it differently when you get above that eight threshold, but we're proposing what we're already doing right now, which is, for some group homes, which is to trigger that special use permit process. So again, the proposed ordinance of, we're defining a new class of group home, which would be group homes for the handicapped, but then, so that would be that additional class, but also then the existing ones, which are group homes for the elderly and group homes for children. Once we've clarified that there are those three different classes of group homes, then we're essentially treating them or proposing to treat them all the same. So eight or fewer permitted use in all residential districts really limit, no other real substantive zoning requirements. There certainly are additional building code requirements, and of course, they have to have state licenses as well. So those would still apply, but fairly simple approach from a zoning perspective. And then nine or more would be a special use permit process in most residential zone districts, with the exception of our mixed-use zoning districts, which have a conditional use permit process, which is really very similar to a special use process. We're also proposing to unify the parking regulations, so that all group homes would be parked in the same manner, which would basically be, they'd have to meet the single-family residential zoning requirement, which is two on-street, off-street parking spaces. If there's on-street parking available, it's just a two-parking-space requirement. If there's no on-street parking available, then it's a four-space, single-family parking requirement for single-family homes. In addition to that, we require that the group homes have parking spaces for the maximum number of employees on any given shift, so that they do address that neighborhood impact in terms of their staff parking. We're also proposing to eliminate the cap on the number of caregivers. We think that that's a function of the business, and that can probably regulate itself, so that as a business model, there's probably going to be a practical cap on what that number is. Additionally, we don't feel like we're really have the knowledge set to be able to get that number right, you know, to know what the right number of caregivers is for different types of group homes. And we certainly want them to operate in a successful manner as that facility with the right number of caregivers. And then lastly, we're, again, in the interest of clarity, we're addressing an issue regarding residential substance abuse clinics, which are allowed as use-by-right or special use permit in most of our commercial and industrial districts. We're proposing to keep it in the same manner. We're just proposing to clean up the regulations, the way it's structured right now in the code, with some cross-references and some notes as confusing for staff, and also for those people that access those sections of the code, if they're looking at locating one of those facilities in the city. The, so again, the substance abuse clinics, really, that's not changing in content, really just changing in terms of how we look at it in the code. I have a handout for you. We are proposing one amendment to the ordinance this evening, really minor, but we're trying to make this bright line between residential and non-residential. So typical offices and clinics for other types of counseling, that's just an inpatient type of medical function, that's going to be a use-group category in the tables. We think it would be clarifying if it just kind of belt and suspenders, if we added the word outpatient in front of that. And I'll hand out a revised motion that we'd like you to consider for this evening. The planning commission did conduct a public hearing last week on this item, accepted public testimony. They considered two motions at that meeting. One was a motion to amend the ordinance to remove all numeric references to the number of residents allowed in group homes. To paraphrase what I think the planning commission was thinking on this topic in their discussions, was that they thought that the existing zoning regulations, building code regulations, should be sufficient to regulate group homes, and they didn't necessarily feel like we needed to pick a number. Ultimately, that motion failed, but they did ultimately pass a motion recommending denial of the ordinance. Again, concern that the ordinance was maybe not necessary, and that it wasn't necessary to pick a number of eight or nine or try and make that decision. If council wishes to adopt the ordinance, again, please consider that additional condition. And again, please note that the moratorium is set to expire on July 16th. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you just shut your off, your computer?
No.
Everything, okay. It's all back on. Thank you. We'll move on to public comment. Do we have anybody here to speak on item number one tonight? Please step forward, and please play your last name for the record, and please state your address and/or your city.
Good evening. Here I am again, Nancy Snow, 11155 West 40th. And I'm going to repeat a little of what I said before. Can you hear me?
Sure, could you just play your last name for the record, Nancy?
S-N-O-W.
Thank you.
You all know that I have been on both the city council and the planning commission, but I also worked over 24 years, almost 25 years, for the Colorado Civil Rights Division. And I consider myself somewhat of an expert on group homes. I was the one that has investigated complaints when group homes were not allowed. Most of the complaints, by the way, are against homeowners' associations, because cities have done a little better in later years at allowing group homes. But I am very much against this, and let me see if I can say why I think we don't need this, or at least not in this present form. It concerns me a great deal about what prompted this great emergency. If I understand correctly, somebody came in and inquired, but didn't put in an application, to take a piece of property just off of Wadsworth and split it in two and have two group homes for 16 people. Now, it's interesting to me that it's in exactly the same place, that the staff and then you were gung-ho for allowing that home right in the same place to turn into a showroom, which will have a lot more traffic than any group homes on that street. So I'm kind of surprised about why this was so urgent. And, but at any rate, the wherays is in this ordinance make it sound as if we simply have done nothing about group homes. Something has been done, it was a philosophical statement, all those words that are wiped out. It was sort of an acknowledgement and an encouragement that people with disabilities can be a family, you know, even if there's more than three unrelated people, which is what we don't allow in the ordinance. Perhaps it needs a number, but eight really bothers me. But let me explain as best I can where the eight came from, and why you find it in all these cities. I even spent some time on the weekend doing some research. As I understand it, in the 80s, there was a big push nationally to get people out of institutions. And the federal government encouraged people to get out of institutions, and then neighbors, frankly, when they opened group homes, complained. So state after state passed a preemption ordinance, well, I guess you'd call it a state statute, requiring cities and counties to allow group homes for at least eight people, which is what we have in our state statute, by the way. That's where the eight comes from for Colorado. The only other rationale I've ever heard is that in order to take care of people, you have to be able to hire somebody, and that costs money. So you have to have more than just a few people, or you really can't run a group home. And the bigger homes, if they have additional staff, then they can possibly take some of those residents' places and give them more things to do. But that's where the eight comes from, and that's why you have it in all the other cities. And I would, just once, we wouldn't just look at other cities and say, well, everybody else has got eight. I can tell you, particularly our Lakewood, it is a nightmare in Lakewood with their ordinance. It is so ugly, they have neighborhood hearings that you would not want to be at. I don't want to see them here. One of the nicest thing about this ordinance is this city has gone since 95, and we haven't had one of those nasty, nasty neighborhood meetings, because we have allowed much larger group homes. Now, I don't know what the magic number is, but when I did just a little looking around, I found a couple of homes with 16 residents. And I find it interesting, it was asked at the planning commission if the planning director knew where our group homes were, and he said, no, but maybe I would. Well, I don't either. But they can't have caused an awful lot of trouble if nobody in this city knows where most of them are. You know, I mean, I hate to see you go down to eight from some of these that are 16. And I look at the people here, I want to know why nobody in this city found out where those group homes were and invited the people who run them to come tonight. You sent out, obviously, the word got out about smoking ordinance and noise ordinances, and I don't think there's a soul here who runs a group home in this city who realizes that if you pass this, you're going to make them non-conforming, which I think is very, very unfortunate. And by the way, the parking is a minor thing, but I have to tell you that almost everybody in a group home doesn't drive, so don't worry about extra parking and extra driving, because they're in a group home, because they can't take care of themselves. Now, I don't know about a group home for teenagers, that's a whole different ball of wax, and I wish you would discuss that separately. But most of these homes, I don't know if I can give you a percentage, but they're either development-y disabled, they're not driving, they're what you and I would probably more commonly call assisted living, they're not driving, I hope. We have some people with brain damage, they're not driving. And so, it's okay, I guess, to require parking for staff, but the regular residents of the home, not many of them are driving, frankly. Anyway, I would just like you to, I was happy when the planning commission recommended you just not pass it, but I understand, Mr. Dahl, and I've talked about it a couple times over the years, why you might want to have some top number. But I wish if it is, it would not put anybody who's here now, make them non-conforming. Are you going to go out and check on people? If somebody makes a complaint, how are you going to find out that they had 15 or 16 people now? What are you going to do? No one's even been notified. At any rate, please turn it down or put a really big number on it. I thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else here for item number one to speak? Mr. Johnstone or Mr. Dahl, would you address the eight versus the 16? Will somebody be non-conforming in the city of Wheat Ridge? Do we know that for sure?
Well, to the extent there are homes out there law, you're with more residents than eight, then they'd become legal non-conforming uses, and our code accounts for that, and specifically says if, you know, if you've got a use that's legal at the time it was initiated, and we change the rules, then you remain legal, you're non-conforming, you remain legal. And when that, when you change use, then you don't continue that entitlement forever. But it's there for you as long as you continue to have that use. And that approach to legal non-conformity is no different than any time the council enacts any change to the zoning code. If you, if it were true that you couldn't put anyone in a legal non-conforming situation, then you could never change the zoning code. And that isn't true, but that's how that would be handled, no differently than the way we handle all other legal non-conforming uses in the city.
Mr. Mayor, I would just add to that. I think city council about two years ago updated our non-conforming regulations to, I think, treat non-conforming, legally non-conforming uses in what I would say would be in extremely fair fashion. When I say that, they're, of course, allowed to be maintained, kept in place, as Mr. Dahl notes. They can actually be expanded by up to 25 percent, so it's a fairly, they can be sold, that question often comes up. So if the property owner wanted to sell it, it's not a land use right that runs just with the current owner of the property. They can transfer that property an unlimited amount of times to future owners as well. So that 25 percent expansion provision is just somewhat unique, and wanted to point that out.
Thank you. Any council questions or concerns, discussion? Ms. Jay?
Mr. Johnson, we discussed that as far as the nonconforming use, and as I recall, and I think you just repeated that, it could be sold and resold. Is there any time limit as to like if it's not using that for a year or something like that?
All right. No, that's a great question. The one caveat to that whole discussion is if a, if a nonconforming use is discontinued and not maintained for a period of 12 consecutive months, then the, the future use of that property would need to be for a conforming use. So they would, they would lose that grandfather status if they, if they discontinued the use for a period of 12 consecutive months.
And the other question I might ask is, will the facilities which are, would then become nonconforming, will they receive a notice should we pass this as to what has happened and the stipulations that are involved?
That would not be a standard practice to do that?
Okay.
Any other questions or comments from council before I close the public hearing?
I have just one question. Has there been any, I know a lot of this is land use and parking, has there been any concerns, issues, neighborhood comments that this is a problem, and that's why we're capping the eight? Or is it just something that we're conforming to what our other communities are doing around us? I mean, is there anything that has moved us towards a step?
I'm not aware of any significant code enforcement complaints regarding group homes. I'm aware of a couple situations where we've had some, some parking issues associated with group homes. But really, the impetus for this from a staff perspective was, was really twofold. Number one, it's a topic that we hadn't looked at in a number of years, and certainly not with this group of elected officials. And second, you know, we, when we saw some fairly significant applications for 20-plus unit group home facilities that were inquiring about locating in single-family neighborhoods, you know, that kind of caught our attention to say, you know, let's take a look at it.
Mr. Starker?
Mr. Johnstone, if this, if this ordinance were to pass, would it be possible to get a special use permit for a greater number of persons in a residential community?
Yes. And those legally nonconforming uses could certainly come, choose to come in and do that. They wouldn't be required to do that, but should they want to attempt to legalize their status, that would be an option for them.
And then, then you would look sort of at the, at the merits of each individual case to see, I guess, the size of the facility and the ground that it occupied and those types of things? To see whether, if you wanted to have a special use to have 20 or 24 or 36, it would then depend more upon the quality of the environment that those residents would enjoy or the facility itself?
Right. I think we would, you know, look at kind of typical land use impacts that you look at for special use, types of land uses, noise, traffic, parking, property size. So, you know, the bigger the operation, certainly, we didn't quantify this, but you'd be looking to see if it's an appropriately, you know, sized parcel, has adequate, adequate parking, has good access to the public street system, et cetera.
Any questions? Any other questions or comments from council? Mr. Johnstone, if someone did have 16 and they can expand by 25 percent, does that mean they could add four more beds? If the property fit the criteria?
I don't believe so. I think the, the expansion is more just the physical structure. So not expansion of the, of the, of the number, but expansion of the, the physical improvements in the property.
Any other questions or comments before I close the public hearing? Close the public hearing, and a motion's in order. A motion was passed out by Mr. Johnstone, plus you could add any amendments.
I'm sorry, I should know how to do this by now, but just open dialogue, we can continue after the initial motion, correct?
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
After the main motion, you can discuss the main motion amendments and anything else
I move to approve Council Bill Number 09-2012, an ordinance in many various sections of Chapter 26 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Law concerning zoning to regulate group homes for the handicapped and to bring uniformity to certain residential group home zoning requirements and substance abuse clinic zoning requirements on second reading, and that it takes effect 15 days after final publication with the following condition: Number one, in Section 6 of the ordinance, in the column for uses, the word outpatient should be added in front of the word counseling.
Is there a second? Is there?
Second.
You have a motion for approval as amended from the motion passed out by Mr. Johnstone, it was seconded by Mr. Stites. Discussion on the main motion or amendments from council?
I'm, I'm basically opposed to this ordinance. I was probably more opposed to declaring an emergency sort of a general way, but, but I do think that the, that we should listen to the Planning Commission to some extent. I'm not in favor of creating nonconforming uses in, in this particular situation. We have no, we're solving a problem that doesn't exist to some extent, that being said. And, and I also believe that philosophically that we should be taking a look at how, what message we're sending with regard to facilities for handicaps broadly. But I could be made more sympathetic if I believed that the, the number weren't arbitrary and reflected something more like we know that we have existing facilities in the city that, that have never been problems, that we're now going to drive into a nonconforming status. And we know they're out there, and we know, you know, with the margin number, I might get over the hurdle, even though it seems, like I said, to me generally, we're solving a problem we don't yet have, and, you know, so, thank you.
Any other comments, Mr. Stites?
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to be on the opposite end of this because I would be for it, and I'll take a pie I'm for it. If it was in a commercial area, if it was in a warehouse area, it's not impacting at that area. But where you have a problem is where they have them in residential neighborhoods, and that becomes a problem. And I think you have to be sympathetic to the neighbors. Now, I don't know what case, you know, whether it would be drug abuse, handicap or whatever, but it will impact, even though they don't drive, you may have buses. I know in instances down on 38th where they have some in apartments down there, there's consistent ambulances down there, fire trucks down there. And you don't know what uses might come along and how it will impact that neighborhood. I don't know really if I would want a 16-bed facility next door to me. I don't know. But I think we have to be sympathetic to that and be extremely careful with the residents. If it was under a special use permit at that time, they could come in and testify, whether they wanted more or whatever. As far as the nonconforming thing, I, I really don't see a problem with that because I don't think some of the zoning and stuff by right stays with a particular property if you were decelerated or, you know, whatever, so that would change anyway. So I really don't think this, uh, uh, whatever, uniformity on the zoning. But I do think that we better take a look and be extremely careful on these homes or particular facilities that go into a residential neighborhood, because I think maybe there's not, they're not lined up to come in now, but possibly they could be, and you don't know. So I would be extremely cautious where we put these in residential, so I like the number eight.
Thank you. Any other comments? I'd like to make a comment after council has made their comments. Ms. Jay?
I'm wondering, is there an economic situation where building a home that only holds eight residents, is that something that cannot be done economically? I am not opposed to residential, that, to homes in residential areas because that was the intent, to get them out, get them into residential areas to replicate something similar to a home-like quality. So I'm very much in favor of that. But I'm just curious as to the finances of creating additional homes at, that if we put it at eight, that will not be a feasible feasibility.
I'll do my best to answer that. I, you know, I think there's probably a lot of different business models out there for different types of group homes. I would say that we feel inquiries quite frequently for smaller group homes. So I think the economics do work at that smaller format as well. You know, even in that four to six resident number, we look at those all the time. So I think that's another business model as well.
Thank you.
Any other comments before I, Ms. Davis?
And I think we talked about this in the study session. So the licensing of these homes, also they review this, probably the facility, how many restrooms, how much square footage by person, and, and safety measures as well. So there, you know, the licensing, I'm guessing, of these group homes, they, they have a license themselves that are also regulating how many people can be in the home and that it's a safe environment. Is that correct?
Correct. There's a state licensing process, and they are, of course, subject to our building codes as well.
Okay. And then one other quick question, I just want to clarify. So the motion that stands now is for capping at eight, correct? Okay.
Counsel, I just, I just wanted to mention that, you know, well, Mr. Pons, sorry.
I'll just, I think this is very difficult, I wanted to just comment, I guess, on Counsel Reinhardt's comments. I do, putting a number to this is a, is a difficult thing, and I'm not prepared tonight to understand whether it should be 16 or less or eight, you know, it, it's hard for me to say that right now. What, so, and I understand some of the, the kind of comments about that process perhaps has been working up to, up to this point. What I, I'm not sure that I agree with abandoning a number altogether, and that's kind of where I'm, I'm a little bit stuck on. To some extent, for me, the establishment of number at least provides a line in which a public process to happen. And, and I hope that that's what would happen, that, that, that the number is, is a number that allows for use, as a permitted use, in a reasonable number of cases, for a reasonable number of businesses, taking care of people who need to be taken care of. And that beyond that, a public process can take place in which to approve these uses. You know, and maybe I'm, maybe I'm reading something differently into it, but my hope is in fact that that's, that's what would take place, whether those were happy meetings or not happy meetings, or whatever, they're public meetings in which, in which someone can come forward and, and put the case on the table. Because I, it's hard, what, the other thing that's hard for me to kind of contemplate is that eight, whether it's eight, nine, 10, 16, whatever, is that every residential area is different, every residential property is different. It's very difficult to, to try to understand this in those terms because not everything is built the same way, not every street is the same, not every, not every neighborhood or group of individuals are the same. And so to me, I suppose, I'm at least in support of setting a number and, and allowing for a public process to take place surrounding that.
Mr. Demont?
You know, I've, I've gone back and forth on this one too, and I've wondered, you know, where the number comes from. I've, I've actually had a grandmother who was in a home here in, in Wheat Ridge, it was a long time ago, but it was a nice place. And I drive by a place every day on the way to work and every day from, and honestly, you probably wouldn't even know it was there. But, you know, I'm trying to look forward to a public hearing to where someone is coming in for a special use permit for 16 or 15 or 20 people. And to me, knowing that they are state licensed, that that wouldn't be what kind of facility they run, or how clean it is, or how many bathrooms it is, wouldn't even be part of that. That's not our, that's not up to us to decide, that's up to the state licensing board to decide. So looking forward to a public hearing, I can't see myself denying any number that I felt was reasonable. I just feel that if they came in economically, they had a best business plan that they thought they could support 16 or 20, you know, in a residential neighborhood, it'd have to be an awfully big house, and I don't think economically that would fit. So I'm inclined to oppose the, this ordinance on the fact that I don't think I would deny, I can't think of a reason, any reason, I would deny any number. So I'm inclined to oppose it.
Mr. Stites?
I understand the philosophy of moving group homes into, you know, home, or, you know, that home environment, but in some cases are reinforcing that philosophy on a residential neighborhood. You know, I'm not trying to be killjoy here or anything, but I think the residents have rights, as well as, you know, some of these group homes or whatever. But I don't like forcing an issue on a particular, you know, residential neighborhood, or, you know, like I said, if it was in a warehouse district, fine, maybe a commercial district, fine. But I think you, you got to be careful, you know, putting some of this in a residential neighborhood because it can, it is impacting. Even though they are serving a purpose and doing a great job, it will impact that neighborhood. And I think we have to be extremely cautious and careful with that. So that's why I somewhat like the number of eight, and then if they needed to, you know, come in on a special use permit or whatever, and then at that time, you know, you could have the neighborhood involved. And it would take a big house for 16 or 14 or, you know, but eight, I think, is a manageable number and quite honestly would be a management number for a residential neighborhood.
I just wanted to mention to council that any time you have a special use permit on a group home, whether it's any kind of disability, you will have neighbors in who are opposing it, whether it's eight to nine, you will have neighbors in here fighting that group home, whether it's going from eight to nine or eight to 20. I mean, we had people in here tonight opposing amplified music ordinance possibly for music. I've been through those public hearings where you've had a disability group coming in, they want to have a group home, and the neighbors fought that, and they lined up and they spoke against allowing that into the neighborhood. I have to agree with Mr. Reinhardt that we don't want to create more nonconforming uses. I think that eight is probably too low. And so my point to council is, you have to do what you have to do to look at this. But I think at this point, because I deal with people with dementia, I did for three years with some relatives, and I deal with students that have disabilities at school, the way, way this is written on the count, I would probably have to veto this if it was passed by council. I think eight is too small of a number, in my opinion. Mr. Stites?
We had one here, oh, God, four or five years ago, I think, when I, it got on, and it came out in the public hearing, they wanted to, you know, get, it was two or three more, four maybe, more rooms in this particular facility that was right smack in the middle of a residential neighborhood, and it came out in there because they would make more money with four. Wasn't to help anybody, but that particular group that was running it would make more money. So, you know, you've got that philosophy too. And I might add, we turned them down that night.
Would council like to take a five-minute break to discuss with staff on any types of changes?
I'm ready for the questions.
Okay. Please poll the, well, we have a, we have a main motion, any amendments? Please poll the council on the main motion as discussed. Please go ahead and revote.
Again?
Yes, please vote again. She had the button down, so please revote.
Maybe I'll change my mind. Can we vote again?
Vote, bud.
Bud, you want to try it?
Vote by number?
Motion carries four to three, with Council members Demott, Davis, and Reinhardt voting no.
Mr. Dahl, I'll deliver the veto message this week to you for counsel. Thank you. We'll move on to item number two, which is Resolution 34-2012. We're going to open the public hearing, Councilmember J.
Resolution number 34-2012, a resolution denying a special use permit application for a JP Morgan Chase Bank drive-up ATM located at 3817 Sheridan Boulevard. At issue, JP Morgan Chase, in cooperation with the property owner, has requested approval of a special use permit, SUP, to locate a drive-up ATM in the parking lot of the King Supers Shopping Center at 38th Avenue and Sheridan. Special uses are discretionary uses, which may be approved by the city if properly designed, developed, operated, and maintained. The primary issues to be addressed relate to justification of need, consideration of design, and operational requirements that mitigate potential detrimental impacts of the special use. When neighboring property owner objections are received, as was the case here, a public hearing and consideration before a city council is required. City council is required to review the application relative to established special use review criteria. Staff has provided an analysis of the application relative to the review criteria in the attached staff report. A special use may be approved, approved with modification, or denied.
Thank you. Mr. Dahl, was this a quasi-judicial or not, this issue, item number two?
Oh, it's quasi-judicial because it's a special use permit.
It is or it isn't?
It is.
It is.
It's a specific line use application.
Okay.
At a specific location, so, yes.
Ms. Davis?
Quasi-judicial, no question.
So I need to disclose that the co-applicant had called and discussed this matter with me, and we had a discussion regarding some of the items discussed at the urban renewal. At the time, I didn't know the special use permit was a quasi-judicial matter, so I need to disclose that. And at no time did we discuss voting, we had just discussed the perception of urban renewal.
Thank you. Everybody else, anybody else like to declare ex parte contact?
I could declare one. It's been over a year and a half ago, when the applicant contacted myself and Wanda Seng to discuss the issue.
Mr. Dahl?
Well, contacts before the application is submitted don't count, so, pardon me, we've got a couple of things going on here. One would be the timeframe, depending, when was the application submitted? Do we know that?
It was submitted probably well over two years ago, to be honest. It has been on hold for a number of years at the applicant's direction, so.
Really?
We didn't ask them to resubmit a new application, so they recently refreshed the application in terms of the plan submittal, but the formal application was submitted. I'd have to look at the case file, which I have on my desk there.
Well, that makes it a little tougher. Life sometimes is tougher. For a pending application, then the focus shifts to what the nature of the conversation was, how extensive it was, and how well the individual that had the conversation can describe that conversation to the council. And if, in this case, she can't, you know, you are able to fully describe what was said, and you can represent to the council that you believe you can still vote in a fair and impartial manner on the application, then you're able to remain. If you can't fully describe what was said, and can't say based upon your earlier contact that you can be unbiased, then it's necessary for you to step down. So we should probably just sort of do a Q and A with each of the council members to involve, to get that information on the record. And I guess we should probably start with Councilmember Davis. Can you describe sort of when this took place and under, I think you sort of have, but if you can kind of repeat that and elaborate on it.
It took place, it actually took place before the study session last week, right before that, because I had called Mr. Goff to say, can we put this on the study session to talk about it? And that's when Patrick had said, Christie, that was quasi-judicial, and I was like, ooh. So it did happen probably a little bit over a week ago, week and a half ago, say. The discussion, basically, the co-owner of the property had discussed with me the importance of how they want to go into the relationship with Chase, and that it would help support their property and be more or less another renter on the property, and give them additional income to help with the maintenance and just the property itself, and making sure it remains in good condition, and it's just another revenue source. At the time, I hadn't known that it was on the study session, but I had heard it being read as a part of the Urban Renewal Authority. And so I had let the applicant know that I was on the Urban Renewal Authority, and at that time, they did not approve the idea or the, you know, the special permit, use permit for the walk-up ATM. I don't know if it's that they were approving it, but they didn't recommend approval, as it didn't support the, their vision as far as the 38th Avenue redevelopment corridor plan of a more walkable street and walkable facility. So at that time, you know, I voiced that to say that, you know, a lot of their concern was that it was still a drive-through, and that it would create more traffic and not pedestrian-friendly. At that time, we kind of discussed about, well, you could walk up to it, but I'd say it's kind of like walking up to a McDonald's. You could walk up to it, but it's not pedestrian-friendly McDonald's drive-through. So at that point, we had, you know, brainstormed basically of if there was one side that was on the sidewalk, that perhaps someone could walk up to an ATM, and the other side would be drivable. You know, those are things to consider, but basically, Urban Renewal didn't feel that it supported their redevelopment plan of 38th, and no point did we talk about a vote. So.
How long did the conversation?
I would say fifteen or twenty minutes, fifteen minutes, maybe.
Okay. Well, the next question for me to ask is, based upon what you've told the council of your interaction, do you believe you can render an unbiased decision on the application?
I would like to recuse myself from the vote.
Okay, fair enough.
Ms. Jay?
We should take up Ms. Jay next, and perhaps you can describe sort of when the conversation took place, with who, with whom, and what was that?
Press, to give you an exact date, it was quite some time ago.
Arrange, that's fine.
There was several contacts by the property owner. To me, I contacted Ms. Seng and requested that she attend the meeting as well.
She was on the council at that?
She was on council at that time. The discussion was about the value of the business of both that particular marketplace, and that it would be in the best interest of the city if that marketplace could continue to flourish, and that the ATM would perhaps provide that. No vote was discussed. The property owner was, of course, encouraging that the ATM be placed.
Who initiated the conversation, was the property owner or you?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Right. I do feel comfortable that I can make a fair decision. It was, for me, information only.
Okay, how long did the conversation take?
It probably took thirty, well, probably an hour, since the property owner chose to take Ms. Seng and I to lunch and had the discussion. So I'm pretty comfortable that it took, you know, at least thirty minutes of conversation about that matter.
Well, it's a, you know, it's a matter up to the individual council member, but, you know, I will tell you that all of the sort of instructions I give, and you, I don't know how many of you have heard me go through this instruction process, but the kinds of ex parte contacts that are accidental and you can't, you can't help, somebody calls you on the phone, you answer the phone and say hello, and it's a constituent who says, how are you, and then they get around to their point, and they say, what I'm really calling about is this application tonight, I want you to vote no. There's no way that you can head that off at the pass, and you say, you know, hold on, thank you very much, and, you know, you need to bring that to the council meeting. That's the kind of contact that I'm not particularly concerned about, you know, you disclose that at the beginning. But the example I think I actually use in training is, you know, if the applicant takes you to lunch and lobbies you on his or her application, that's really like me taking the judge to lunch when one of you brought a lawsuit against me for selling you a bad car, and now you see me taking the judge to lunch. You would not want that judge to be sitting on the case, and you'd really question, I think, whether the judge could be impartial. Now, having said that, it's clearly something that I can't tell you, you must step down, but what I do is express that it's difficult to basically share with the council everything that was said in that hour, because we would have to take another hour, and you might not succeed because you'd have to remember back to that period of time. It may well be that you can feel as if you can act in a unbiased manner, but a fair amount of information has been delivered to the judge that you just can't share very easily with the other judges.
I can understand.
That's the concern I want to express.
Yep, I can understand that, and actually, probably at that point, I did form opinions as to the, at, when, let me say that I had no idea why Mr. Perry wanted to take me to lunch, which is why I called Wanda Seng and asked her to attend, but only to understand it more after, I was pretty new at being a council, so I would be happy to recuse myself.
So, Mr. Dahl, we need a motion by counsel to allow certain council members to recuse themselves? Or can they just automatically?
No, I think they just do. Let me check the charter quickly, but I'm pretty sure that we don't have a charter provision that has them stepping down. If you give me just one minute, I want to make sure of that. Charter 4.10 actually has the council making that decision. And it says that if any council member fails to declare an interest, well, no, that's a financial interest in the application, and it's true, there's no financial interest in the application, this is just ex parte contact, so it's back to the council members that have to make up their own minds on this. But now would be the time for each of you to declare that based upon the contacts, you either will or won't step down. If you do, it's time to go have some coffee.
Yeah, so if you'd like to recuse yourself, please, at this time, leave the dais for me, please.
And I observe that still leaves the council with a quorum.
A quorum.
Barely. Thanks, and I appreciate it. In this particular case, especially for Councilmember J, you know, when you had an application that came in a couple of years ago, it's reasonable for you to not understand that there's a live one out there six months ago. I absolutely understand that, and I'm not sure that we can do much differently at a staff level than, you know, keep you apprised of applications as they come in.
Okay, so Mr. Demott has flagged, he wants to go ahead and introduce the item as far as the motion. So we'll go, we'll bow to staff report, then we'll do public comment, and then we'll do council discussion. So, Mr. Johnstone, you're up.
Thank you. For the record, Ken Johnstone, Community Development Director. A few housekeeping items, would like to know the contents of the case file, as well as this digital presentation into the record. I would also note that the public notice has been fully met, including posting of the property prior to conducting this hearing. We did have one.
Mr. Johnstone, I need to swear everybody in, too, because it's quasi. So for the record, just to show you, we'll have to note that I swear everybody in. Please stand and raise your right hand if you're going to speak on this agenda item. Please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth in this matter? Thank you. Okay, everybody's been sworn in, the public hearing is open, it's your show, Mr. Johnstone.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, Jessica Rothman submitted an email that she wanted us to enter into the record this evening, so I'll keep a copy for myself and pass those along. Again, this is a special use permit application for a Chase proposed JP Morgan Chase Bank drive-through ATM facility at 3817 Sheridan Boulevard, at the northwest corner of 38th and Sheridan and Wheat Ridge. It's a existing King Supers anchored center. If you look at the site plan, 38th in the south, Wadsworth, or, excuse me, Sheridan on the east, the existing King Supers is in this location. You'll be hearing more about that property later this evening. Field of parking, and then a retail strip center on this side and this side. This is also the canopies for the fueling station that's associated with the King Supers as well. Just some ground slides, you can see this is again that intersection of 38th and Sheridan where the city had installed those landscape walls and signage back in 2002. This is looking from the south across into the site. The proposed location for the ATM would be roughly right here on the right side of the slide, just, maybe just off the slide, actually. This is one of the two main entries off of 38th Avenue into the center. The other one's located further to the east. So again, the ATM would be just behind this steel fence and stone pier wall. Looking internal to the site towards 38th Avenue, this is really the location, approximately in this location, where the proposed drive-up ATM would be located. You can see, while I've got this slide, that obviously the important monument signage for the project, set on a nice brick monument, that's probably about thirty-six inches tall, so not terribly tall. You see, it's a little actually lower than the fence height. I know the applicant has proposed to install potentially some low shrub screening, and I just note that from a tenant's standpoint, I'm sure it'll be important that if that were to be approved, to keep that at a height that maintains the visibility of that signage. Again, this is looking straight at it, so between, if you're the slide taker, the photographer, kind of between the photographer and that panel truck is where the location of the ATM is proposed. And again, looking outwards to the site at the exact location of where the ATM would be proposed. A little bit of history, the shopping center was constructed originally back in 1981. It's certainly been remodeled here and there along the way. The added Gale's gas sales tax facility, after getting approval of another SUP back in 2002, actually the same year that the city built the streetscape improvements, that included that corner feature that I showed you, along with sidewalks and decorative bollards along 38th Avenue, including, I think, on this property or adjacent to this property, thirteen street trees along the 38th Avenue frontage. t- street trees, uh, along the, the Thirty-Eighth Avenue frontage. Um, we have done more recently some long-range planning, uh, in two thousand and nine in Vision Wheat Ridge, the citywide comprehensive plan was adopted. Uh, that was the, the plan that really identified, uh, Thirty-Eighth Avenue as a potential main street or a downtown corridor for the city. Uh, in two thousand and eleven, we really elaborated on that and, and developed the more full-fledged Thirty-Eighth Avenue corridor plan that was approved, uh, in October of that year. And of course, implementation efforts, uh, are ongoing. Uh, as council is aware, uh, the road restriping took place a couple of weeks ago. Uh, we're in the process, if you've been out on the street recently, of, of installing a series of, of landscape planters and, and pedestrian amenities own, uh, outdoor cafe areas that will, uh, also be part of that project. I know they have placed a number of the, of the older, uh, concrete, um, planters that, that we already own that are going to be the, the recipient of different art panels that, uh, the Thirty-Eighth Avenue Leadership Committee is sponsoring, so that, that work is underway. And later this week, uh, should start to see the, the larger, uh, more recently purchased landscape amenities, uh, and the pop-up cafes that should start going in later this week. I was out this evening, and they hadn't gone in yet. I think they were actually scheduled to, to begin, uh, today. Uh, this is just a, a snapshot from Envision Wheat Ridge from the citywide comprehensive plan. You can see that, uh, the, the kind of mauve-ish color is the, is the main street corridor designation. Obviously, this is also a, a main commercial center with King Supers being, uh, one of our larger, uh, retail anchors, uh, in the city and certainly, uh, in this part of, uh, Thirty-Eighth and Sheridan. And then, of course, it's also a, a very much an important gateway, and we've already branded that gateway with, uh, the improvements that were made back in two thousand and two that I think all, by all counts, have been successful. Uh, getting into the specifics of the, of the site plan for what's being, uh, proposed, uh, you can see again in the colored portion of the site plan where they've highlighted the landscaping, uh, this is the location of the ATM. Uh, the cars would come in this direction so that the, obviously the driver has access to that ATM facility, uh, and they're showing the ability to, to stack a few vehicles in this location. Um, just to back up to that, uh, we did conduct a, a parking analysis of the property, and even with, uh, the removal of, of these parking spaces, we certainly think that there will, both from a code standpoint and from a practical standpoint, still be, uh, adequate parking on the property. Uh, these spaces do certainly get some use. I was out, again, this evening, uh, and there were a couple cars parked in that location, but, uh, there certainly was plenty of parking in the surrounding area, uh, as well. Little closer look just to, to see that a little bit better. Uh, you can see the location of the existing monument sign, uh, that is an important, uh, part of the, uh, success of the project right now. Uh, they are proposing, uh, to put in curbing in this location to define the circulation, uh, and then turf in those landscaped areas. Uh, you can see the, the low shrubs, uh, that they're, that they're showing, and again, they're acknowledging that they'll need to be low, uh, twenty-four inches in height is what's, uh, being proposed. They're also acknowledging that the, the irrigation system would need to be upgraded, uh, in order to adequately, uh, have those plants and grass survive. A few graphics just showing the, uh, the visual of the, of the proposed ATM, uh, facility. Uh, these are, you know, fairly standard units. Some, I, I would assume that, uh, that JP Morgan Chase uses, uh, various locations throughout the, uh, state, the country, the metro area. Uh, they had proposed to add a small, uh, brick base. This doesn't show up in all of the graphics, uh, but it does show up in this one in terms of trying to incorporate some more, uh, masonry building materials, which would be more consistent with, uh, the requirements of the Architectural Design Manual. Uh, as per standard practice, we did do an agency referral, uh, to utility, uh, agencies as well as internal, uh, departments. Uh, both the Police Department and the Public Works Department reviewed and, and don't have concerns. Um, obviously, the Public Works Department's traffic concerns would be more concerned with, uh, if there was any off-site, uh, traffic impacts that would extend out into the public, uh, street system, and they determined that that would not be the case in this, uh, with this proposal. Um, as Ms. Davis summarized, uh, Renewal Wheat Ridge, because the, uh, proposed activity takes place within an urban renewal area, Thirty-Eighth Avenue corridor is, uh, in an adopted urban renewal plan area, uh, the Renewal Wheat Ridge did consider this, uh, in the last several weeks, uh, and their conclusion and, and recommendation are, uh, that's forwarded to council is that the proposed SUP, uh, was not consistent with the urban renewal plan, again, as noted by Ms. Davis. Um, a fairly limited amount of public comments that have, that have, uh, come out as, as part of the, uh, neighborhood meeting process. Um, there was an email, uh, in your packet from someone that objected, um, and then the same person sent the other email today. So, those are two emails from the same person. Um, as per standard practice, we did conduct, um, an evaluation of the special use permit criteria, uh, attached to the council action form as a, as a planning, uh, division staff report that, uh, is our technical analysis, uh, relative to those, those eight special use, uh, criteria. Uh, we did find that a, a number of those crime, uh, criteria in our minds, uh, were not met. Um, uh, so I've kind of summarized that here. Uh, we did find that the use, uh, would contribute to blight in the area, uh, due to the proposed design of the facility, uh, the lack of pedestrian orientation, given that, uh, the, the, obviously, this is a, a use that's oriented strictly to motorists. Uh, we have concerns that the facility will create, uh, negative adverse visual impacts, uh, being essentially the backdrop to the, to the fairly recently installed landscape, uh, and, um, streetscape improvements that date back to two thousand and two in this area, but that really defined the corridor, uh, and this would be immediately behind that, uh, that wrought iron and, and brick fence. Uh, we do have some concerns. Uh, these aren't quantified in a technical way, but that the ATM, uh, vehicle circulation is going to congest an area that's already fairly congested. Uh, this exit and entry into the site, uh, gets a fair amount of, of activity, just on, uh, my own experience, um, and this would, would add to that in this location. So, we have some concerns that that, um, w- will be a negative impact to the overall functioning of the center. I've summarized this more thoroughly in, in the staff report, but we do have, uh, concerns that the proposal conflicts with, uh, various principles in the Architectural and Site Design Manual. Uh, this property is located within a traditional overlay, uh, of the Architectural and Site Design Manual. Uh, there's a variety of requirements, uh, but certainly, uh, the, the general notion of the Architectural and Site Design Manual, particularly in the traditional overlay, is that we're, we're looking for land uses and activities that are, uh, oriented to more of the pedestrian scale. Uh, drive-through functions, parking functions are, uh, required to be located at the rear of the site and, and out of kind of the, the main public view. So, those are, uh, concerns that we have. And then, just finally, in terms of findings, uh, we do, um, think it's important to consider the, the recommendation from Renewal Wheat Ridge, uh, who found the proposal to be, uh, inconsistent with their adopted corridor redevelopment plan. In terms of, of city council action, um, uh, this application, because we received a written objection that automatically triggers a, a public hearing before city council, uh, administrative review is not an option once that objection, uh, was received a few weeks back. Um, obviously, I've already gone over my evaluation of the special use criteria. Uh, because we found that a majority of the criteria, um, have not been met in our minds, uh, we are recommending denial, um, and we forwarded a resolution, Resolution Thirty-Four, for your consideration, uh, this evening, uh, with findings. Um, obviously, uh, city council has, uh, options tonight. You can, you can approve that resolution denying the request, uh, you can approve the application for a special use permit and make your own findings in support, um, of the application, uh, and certainly you can approve, uh, with conditions, uh, that you think would be important to help the application better meet, uh, the special use permit criteria. And that is my presentation. I'm available for questions.
Thank you. We'll move on to the applicant. Uh, please step forward. Does the applicant have to say a few words about the application? I mean, basically, this is an appeal to council, so please step forward and, please spell your last name for the record and, um, state your city and your address, please.
Uh, Joshua Higgins, H.I.G.G.I.N.S., Fontana, California. Um, I'm here obviously in support of the, um, SUP. Um, I think that we've done all our diligence, due diligence in advance, to be able to provide the, um, requirements that the city has asked for. Um, we provided, uh, numerous amount of studies and whatnot that we think that will support the ATM and the use within this property. The questions that were brought up by council earlier were about the, uh, the initial submittal for the applicant, and, and a, a little bit background behind that is that so we have hired a general contractor to submit this application on behalf. Um, we were not aware that there was a response made by the applicant to, uh, to planning. Um, when I found that out, I went ahead and terminated that contractor. Um, I went ahead and responded back to the city and asked them if we can resubmit on behalf of the initial, um, comments that were made by the city. And, um, they went ahead and allowed, and I went ahead and proceeded, went forward with those comments. And it looked like a lot of the comments that we interpreted was more into the cosmetic and the location, or in terms of the placeholder of the actual ATM. So, we've, uh, we've made some additional studies and whatnot, which took a period of amount of time, um, some conversations with the landlord and whatnot through JP Morgan Chase, to be able to relocate the island in a specific location where it defeats what we, uh, assume would be, uh, an over large amount of stacking that we think that the, the, um, the, um, the property will be hindered by. Um, we also had visited the site numerous of times and, um, as well as today, and we do see a cons, a, a, a numerous amount of, of, of pedestrian traffic as well as, um, vehicular traffic. But, um, a lot of that traffic seems to be hindered by, by, um, pedestrians walking through traffic themselves, uh, not necessarily, uh, volume. And, um, I think the location depicted here in our application and our resubmittal, um, allows the stacking for three, three vehicles. Um, it also puts, um, allows additional stacking of fortified vehicles before entering and exiting, uh, the property upon Thirty-Eighth. And, um, I think, uh, with us modifying the, uh, the columns of the, um, ATM island and, um, trying to kind of, uh, uh, grasp a little bit about what the city's trying to do to rehabilitate that specific space of your corridor is, has been considered and been obviously incorporated into our drawings. So, um, again, uh, I'm in support of moving forward with the, um, SUP and addressing any other additional comments that council may have, if, uh, we need to, um, incorporate into the design. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the applicant's side? Please step forward if you wish. It's your call.
(inaudible).
Okay. 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 Anybody else from the applicant? Now, we'll move on to public comment. Please step forward and state your name and spell your name, last name for the, uh, record, and please state your city or your address.
Yes, my name is Mike Shekel, S.C.H.E.C.K.E.L., and I'm with King Supers at sixty-five Taone in Denver. And I would like to make a public comment that, uh, King Supers as a retailer, as an anchor of the shopping center, is, uh, very much in favor of the ATM. We've briefly looked over the, uh, layout of it, briefly looked over the materials, et cetera. Don't have any problems with it whatsoever at its location. Um, my, the main point that I would like to stress is, um, to just kind of frame it in the larger situation. This entire project has probably taken close to three years to finally kind of come together. There's been many aspects, uh, several of those aspects are what we're talking about here tonight. And I would like to thank, um, would like to make sure that everyone knows that, that staff did a very good job trying to put all these pieces together. We've got ownership, other retailers, ourselves, our internal, uh, mechanisms and processes and procedures that we have to go through as well. And, uh, as I said before, it took about three years. When we originally approached, uh, Mr. Johnstone, Mr. Goff about this, about three years ago, to try and figure out what to do, what was the best path to do those types of things, and kicked off all of these different issues, they were very proactive, um, and they've been very proactive, and I think they've tried to be as flexible as possible within all the constraints that, that you and, and they have to deal with. And, uh, so I would like to make sure that everybody knows that we have, um, it's, everyone's worked, in short, everyone's worked very hard on this. And I think we've got a project as a whole together now that is basically a win for each entity that's involved in it. And it's a win for the shopping center ownership, it's a win for the city, it's a win for King Supers, if we can pull all these things together and, uh, really, uh, kind of kick it off.
Did you say you were from King Supers?
Yes.
Could you address the, if this will happen, if you're competitive or not, be competitive in the area? Is the shopping center being competitive in the area?
Yes. The, the, the shopping center has been, obviously, it's been around since nineteen eighty-two, I believe, is when we actually opened our doors. It was built in nineteen eighty-one, has been a very competitive, uh, uh, spot for us, and we've, uh, every few years, we, uh, reanalyze almost every one of our stores in our system. And, uh, other, other sites, other alternatives, expansions, et cetera, come up, they come and go, they're all, they're analyzed, they're debated internally, externally, et cetera, and, and, and that is one of the things that, um, that has been the struggle internally for King Supers and Kroger, is selling, staying at this location, um, to Cincinnati, to, to get their support to stay here for an extended period of time and reinvest in this location. And, and that's the point where we think our corporate is at right now, and all of these things help contribute to that, to bringing that to fruition.
Thank you. Any questions? Uh, please spell your last name for the record and please state your city and your address.
Uh, my name is Robert Perry, P.E.R.R.Y., sixty-five hundred South Quebec Street, um, Englewood. And, uh, I'm one of the, uh, co-owners of the property, and, uh, my partner?
Uh, Jeff Bailey, B.A.I.L.E.Y., sixty-five hundred South Quebec, Englewood, Colorado, eight zero one one one.
And we've been owners since, um, nineteen ninety-two. I don't know if you remember what the center looked like back then, but it wasn't very pretty. Um, I guess I'd like to say that we've been a friend of Wheat Ridge's for quite some time. Um, as Mike has addressed, had addressed, um, we've been talking with staff for quite some time, and there's been many pieces of this puzzle, and one of the pieces is that, you know, we've been asked, or we've offered to, um, to, uh, you know, rehab the facade to match King's exterior. And the way that we had planned to pay for that is through the income that's generated by the ATM. And we had, it's been from day one, uh, we've said that, you know, we can't do that facade without the ATM. And we didn't, we thought both of these would be con- uh, combined with the King's, uh, resolution, but, uh, since they're separate, um, I thought I'd like to add that.
Yeah.
Uh, I think Bob states it pretty clearly that, uh, I think, anybody knows it's difficult times economically, and we're, we as Kings are trying to do everything we can to redo this center and keep this, keep this major tenant and what improvements we can contribute to it. Income's always an issue. Uh, there's a lot of other expenses go along, and, and to reiterate what Bob said, we've worked in conjunction with the city through a long period of time, from the expansion of King's to the fuel facility through the, uh, streetscape project, and we're here again, and, and I think we had done a, uh, ISSTAP or one, one of the tax forms before, and we, we're successful. We paid every penny back, and at this particular time, we as the, as the owners are just saying, we like this tenant, we think it's, it's a good use, it can help draw traffic, and it can certainly help the income stream, it can help us contribute to the facade, joining what, what Kings would like to do. We appreciate your strong support in this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment before I move on to council questions and discussion? Seeing other public comment, so we'll move on to council? Discussion from council?
I, I have a number of questions for Mr. Johnstone. As I understand, the, the formal criteria for a special use permit, um, basically, we have eight criteria in which they need to meet five, and by staff report, you already claim they meet three, which means that when I look through some of the others, I would be drawing a different conclusion that would give a different outcome. Um, the, I, the, the term blight, um, in the criteria number two, um, sometime, I would like to have a long discussion about what that word means, but I don't think it applies particularly well to this situation. But even if you concede that point, it seems an odd- But even if I concede that point, it seems an odd conclusion to me that the special use, that they don't meet the criteria on traffic in light of the fact that the, you know, it seemed like, if I heard you correctly, the Public Works essentially disagreed with that conclusion, that it did not impact in some general way, and that's, you know, you can always argue that one more car makes the traffic worse than it would have been without that car. So in absence of a Public Works recommendation, you know, I might get to a question, I might just talk for a while if that's all right, if nobody minds. So those look pretty straightforward to me as things that would sort of push this over the five threshold. I mean, you can certainly argue some of these conceptual problems don't meet some of our more esoteric guidelines, but at the core requirements, it would seem to me to meet them. And I guess, would you care to respond to that?
Just in part. You know, blight is a very ill-defined concept. I think we, I did show some deference to the fact that the Urban Renewal Authority looked at it, who is kind of in the business of determining when and if blight exists, and didn't find, for various reasons, that it met their criteria in terms of the Urban Renewal Plan. In terms of the traffic, just a point of clarification, Public Works did not review the internal circulation issue. They don't feel like they have the jurisdiction to opine on whether or not an internal site functions well or not. Their opinion in terms of the special use permit was that it wouldn't have any detrimental impacts on 38th Avenue functioning in terms of the onsite traffic somehow negatively spilling out onto the street.
Okay, fair enough. Let's assume that you are going to continue to disagree on those points. Let me ask you one thing that's more directed to where I'd really like to go with this. If the, within the purely cosmetic elements of what's going to happen here, we've got a variety of screening, we've got some brick architectural components, which generally, I think, meet where I would have liked to have seen this gone. Was there anything from, that you felt you didn't get that was a reasonable ask from the applicant in terms of the presentation of the actual kiosk and all the working elements of it?
Right. Well, you note the brick, which we thought was an important element to add, which they've shown now. We need to clarify a few of the documents, but that should be easy to do. The landscaping, you know, we haven't seen much in the way of what that actually looks like. It's been fairly conceptual, but we could work through that as well. The only other, I guess substantive comment that I might make is just the really micro level of the circulation in terms of some of the radius of the curbing that defines the ATM drive-thru. Those are fairly small islands. I mean, I think there could be an opportunity to really fine-tune that curbing design so that it functions a little more better.
Okay. I guess I'm satisfied. Thank you.
Mr. Pond?
Couple of things, just, excuse me, for my education. Renewal Wheat Ridge is a reviewing authority in this case because it's an urban renewal area? I'm just trying to clarify. So it had nothing to do with a letter or anything else coming through? At the beginning of this, obviously it clarifies that this would have been an administrative piece unless there was a complaint raised, or, you know, a concern raised, which there was, which is why we're sitting here tonight. Am I correct in assuming that Wheat Ridge Renewal would have, would have had a public hearing regardless?
Not a public hearing, per se. They're strictly an advisory referral. So we're required for any kind of a land use application that occurs within an urban renewal area to give them a referral and give them an opportunity to comment on it. It's not a binding action in any way, it's strictly an advisory opinion.
So it's a, it's a public meeting, not a, not a formal hearing like we're having right now?
Correct. And Patrick, I think, was in attendance, if you have.
I was not in attendance at this meeting, but Mr. Johnstone was correct, and their strict obligation is to look at how this proposed project adheres to the urban renewal plan in that jurisdiction.
In other applications, I'm used to seeing a little bit of that background information. Is there any information on how well-attended that was, how many people came to that public meeting?
Probably none. It's a decision by the board, and there's typically not any in attendance for those. They review numerous referrals that come to community development, and it's just part of their median agenda.
Thank you. So just a referral.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Demont?
Wanted to go back to a couple of those pictures, if we can. One with the sign and the, the one before the box truck, one particularly in before that. In this picture here, in the lawn area, I'm looking at the second page of the big plans, it looks like the, the curbing starts directly east of that sign. In this next picture, or in two pictures next, you're saying it's to the west of that.
Do you want to see the?
No, maybe it was before that one. That one there. That one there is actually, looks like that will remain parking in that. That'll actually start to the east of that.
Correct. Yeah, I think if you look at the, this picture is maybe not the perfect snapshot, but if you, so if you, yeah, if you, directly to the east is really the start of the, all the modifications, because it's right at the sign.
Well, I'm looking particularly at the, the space of that six, you know, those six spots, you know, in regards to this car on the street there and the two behind it. I'm just thinking that, you know, if you could fit three cars to the east of that sign in the driveway, and you're looking at three or four more, you know, I've never seen an ATM stacked up with seven cars. I'm sure they'd be thrilled to get it, but, so I don't, I mean, I'm just trying to picture where this is. And then the shrubs in this same one is kind of behind that sign, or just along the fence of that sign? I mean, there's no picture of it, I'm looking at this.
Graphic.
I guess we can look at any of those, but I'm just wondering about if it would block that signage, because, okay, there you go. Because it looks like, I'm assuming those little blocks are, are those ballast poles or are those shrubs?
Those are proposed as shrubs.
So it looks like that whole thing, according to the scales, about 150 feet from curb cut to curb cut, maybe a little bit more. From entrance to entrance, it says one inch is 50 feet.
Oh, for the whole row of parking?
I'm just kind of all parking this whole thing, yeah.
Yeah, that's.
Between each entrance, about 150 feet or so.
190.
192. Also 200 feet. That's the only question I had, I think, was the measurement on that.
Mr. Starker?
Mr. Johnstone, in looking at the parking on the applicant's cover sheet, it looks like we've got 303 stalls.
Go back to my packet.
What's our, what's our normal parking ratio in a, in a center like this?
Five per thousand, so one per 200 square feet of retail space?
Okay. And we've got about 80,000 feet of retail. Do we think that, does your department think that the parking, that taking away eight parking spaces hurts this, the parking available for this center?
No, we don't. Both in terms of just meeting the letter of the law, but also just as a practical matter. Based on our observation, we think there's adequate parking at the end of the day.
And on the, you went back to the applicant, on the matter of the brick base, you went back to the applicant and said it would look better if we had a brick base on it, so it'd sort of match the, the other brick features that are out there in the sign and that sort of stuff?
Correct.
And are you, and the applicant responded, and I see some sketches of some brick bases, does that kind of mitigate your, some of your objections with that?
To some extent. I mean, I think we still question whether, you know, how substantial it is, how visible it is. I mean, ultimately, the material palette for this, just given what it is, is very different than what the materials that are recommended in the Architectural and Site Design Manual. It's just the nature of what it is.
But it's not significantly different than the monument sign that's out front with a brick base on it?
Fair enough. Yeah, I mean, I think they're showing about a 12-inch base, and I think that monument probably has a three-foot brace. It's.
Kind of plastic up above? I mean, it's for the sign faces and that sort of stuff.
Say again, I'm sorry.
I, just to pass in comment, it looked like that you have a, you have sort of a monument sign with a brick base and then a plastic lettering above there.
Right.
Internally illuminated signage.
Right. Yep, that's, that's the design.
I don't think I have anything more right now.
Mr. Stites?
Yeah, I'm going to withhold most of my comments that we get ready to vote, but I just wanted to go on record as an observation, that I find it extremely gross in concept that it would take a three-year process to put an ATM anywhere.
Do we have any good comments before I close the public hearing for a motion? Mr. Pond?
Well, because, since you said that, I guess I just maybe ask for a little bit of clarification, because I think I see two or three instances inside of this where there's been, obviously, and even by the applicant's admission in this hearing, a process, a dialogue with staff. However, what I see in the report is where there is a recommendation or a request that where the applicant hasn't, hasn't responded. I'm just trying to understand, is there, does there seem to be room for continued dialogue and compliance with some of the things that you're shooting for? Have we, did we run into an impasse where there's no more conversation about this and they've done everything? I don't know if that's a question to you or the applicant. I suppose both could answer.
I think the, you know, the applicant, in their most recent submittal, probably believes that they've addressed the staff comments that went out in our referral comments. To me, to the extent that the length of time for the processing, I guess, is a long story, I don't think there was any suggestion that the, that the three years was the special use application. It was the, the larger picture of the store investment.
Any more questions, Mr. Pond? I want to close the public hearing, a motion's in order.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve a special use permit for a JP Morgan Chase Bank drive-up ATM on property at 3817 Sheridan Boulevard, SUP 12-04, for the following reasons. I believe that the applicant has provided a new amendment to their proposal to blend in more with the, with the brick of our Streetscape plan, as well as the building. I believe the centering of the ATM in that, between those two that they've described in their letter, dated May 4th, will aid in the circulation, vehicle circulation. I believe that the walkability is not an issue. I think that it's sitting next to basically a gas station, and there is a walk-up ATM, I believe, in the outside and inside of that King Supers. There's one outside. Inside? That would be a more safe place to go. And I don't believe that the landscape would affect the signage. And with following conditions, I think that if they could adhere to the brick pattern that would match the Streetscape better.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dahl, do you have anything to add to those findings? Because we'll need a findings, right?
No, I think.
Tried to address each one.
For a motion for approval, I think that's sufficient.
Then you'll pick them up in the next meeting for the findings. Do we have to bring back the findings for approval, or we do findings for denial?
No, I typically, where I'm really concerned and want to make sure I have really tight written findings is where there's a denial and it's controversial. But here, you've made enough findings on the record, I think that's going to be sufficient.
So the motion for approval was seconded by Councilor Stites. Discussion on the main motion? Please poll the council.
Motion carries four to one. With Mr. Pond voting no.
Thank you. Congratulations. We're going to take a 10-minute break, because it's getting hot in here in Moore's. Two, five, items five and six are public hearings, I'm gonna open the public hearing for Resolution 32-2012 and Resolution 33-2012, we're gonna hear both as one public hearing, Ms. Davis.
Resolution number 32-2012, a resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement allowing King Supers, Inc. to participate in the Wheat Ridge Business Development Zone program for the rebate of building use tax in an amount not to exceed $100,000 in association with the remodel of their facility at 38th and Sheridan Boulevard. The issue, the city received a request from King Supers, Kings, to enter the Business Development Zone BDZ program for the rebate of building use taxes in association with a proposed remodel of their facility at the northwest corner of 38th Avenue and Sheridan Boulevard in Wheat Ridge. Would you like me to read the next one?
Yes, please.
Okay. Resolution number 33-2012, a resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement with King Supers, Inc. for participation in the enhanced sales tax incentive program in an amount not to exceed $300,000 for the remodel of their store located at 3817 Sheridan Boulevard. King Supers has made an application and request to participate in the city's enhanced sales tax incentive program relating to the exterior remodeling of their store located at 3817 Sheridan Boulevard. The remodel includes creating new public improvements to the exterior of the store, creating a new public mall access to the store.
Thank you, Mr. Dahl, I just want to double check, are these quasi judicial tonight? Because they were in the wrong part of the agenda?
No, they're not a land use application, they're just a, they're effectively, they're like a contract, basically.
Okay, yes.
So nobody has to leave?
No one has to leave.
Okay, so we'll move on to any staff presentation beyond the executive summary?
Yeah, I do, I have a short presentation, thank you, Mayor. Before you tonight is a business incentive package for Dillon Companies, who's doing business as King Supers. Dillon Companies is planning a $5.8 million remodel of their store located at 38th and Sheridan, the last significant remodel to the store was in 1995. Business incentive package that is in front of you tonight consists of funding from two separate economic development tools that are available in the city's code, and I will go through each of those briefly, one at a time. The first one is Resolution 32-2012, and this is the Business Development Zone Incentive Package. Wheat Ridge Code of Laws, Chapter 22, Article 1, Division 5 establishes the Business Development Zone Program. The goal of the, this program is to encourage the development of private sector jobs, revitalize deteriorating areas of the city, and encourage the development, redevelopment and expansion of businesses within the city. On May 14th, City Council, of this year, City Council approved a resolution designating the entire city as a Business Development Zone, so that's one step we can skip tonight. The BDZ program allows for the abatement or sharing of eligible city fees, charges, and taxes up to the amount of expected incremental future sales and use tax revenue to be generated by the project. The agreement before you tonight, under Resolution 32-2012, is a negotiated agreement that stipulates that an amount not to exceed $100,000 in building use tax will be refunded to Dillon Companies. Building use tax for this project is estimated to be just over $100,000. Use tax on furniture, fixtures, and equipment will still apply to this project, and the city will receive those funds. The benef, uh, I won't go over those benefits, wait till, we'll talk about the Enhanced Sales Tax Incentive Program, which is Resolution 33-2012. The Wheat Ridge Code of Laws, Chapter 22, Division 4 established the Enhanced Sales Tax Incentive Program, or SSEP. The purpose of the SSEP is to encourage the establishment and/or substantial expansion of retail sales tax generating businesses within the city, which will in turn stimulate the economy, provide employment opportunities, expand the goods available for purchase and consumption by residents of the city, and increase the sales tax collected by the city. SSEP allows for the sharing of incremental sales tax generated from the project to defray the cost of public or publicly related improvements that shall enhance the competitive position of the applicant within the Denver metropolitan area marketplace. The negotiated agreements, that is part of Resolution 33-2012, stipulates that an amount not to exceed $300,000 in incremental sales tax will be shared with Dillon Company, Dillon Companies over a seven-year period, or whichever occurs first. Staff recommends approval of both the SSEP agreement and the BDZ agreement, mainly because of the following benefits that we see would come to the city. This will help retain necessary neighborhood services and brings revenue to the city from surrounding communities. This will, this project will help retain 50-plus full-time and 100-plus part-time jobs in this shopping center, potentially will create new revenues through permit fees, use tax on the fixture furnitures and equipment, and future incremental sales tax, spurs reinvestment and remodeling of the entire shopping center, and extends the King Supers' commitment to the shopping center to the year 2033. So with that, I will close and be available for questions.
Thanks. Do we have anybody from the public to speak on items five or six? Seeing none, we'll move on to council discussions and questions on items five and six. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and a motion's in order for five and six.
Thank you. I move to approve Resolution number 32-2012, a resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement allowing King Supers, Inc. to participate in the Wheat Ridge Business Development Zone program for the rebate of building use tax in the amount not to exceed $100,000 in association with the remodel of their facility at 38th and Sheridan.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion for approval of item number five, it was seconded by Councilmember Demott, discussion on item five? Please poll the council. Oh, Ms. Jay?
I am, I do have a question, see if I can kind of explain it, or if I understand it correctly. As I understand, we remit back to the applicant, the fees that they've paid, is that the way it works, we collect them and then we remit back? And my question is, when we remit those back, are we making a determination that the monies have been expended on the improvements as stated? So that improvements go to the building as well as the exterior buildings and areas around, because I noticed a lot of the things that, in, in the write-up, indicating that the improvements may go to this or may go to that, and I wanted to know, before we remit back to them, what is our kind of check system to make sure that the community is receiving the values?
Correct, the, our code under both of these programs does require that that can provide necessary documentation to show that the funds are spent for eligible projects.
Okay, within the scope of what was articulated in, in the, the original proposal?
Correct.
Okay, and the other question I have is the question about the art fund, that 1% is to go to the public art fund?
Correct, thank you for reminding me of that, Ms. Jay, I did verify that, and this project is eligible to contribute to the art fund, so that, those fees will be calculated by the building department when the permit is pulled and, and will be segregated into the public art fund.
Okay, then, our portion of our 102,000, 1,000 would go into the art fund?
Well, the, the art fund comes from the planning, the fee, I think the fee portion, planning review fees, development review fees, not from the use tax, so I-
Oh, that's right, that was a different-
Yeah, so we're not abating those fees, so we will abate a portion of those to go to the public art fund. And I don't have that exact number, well, it's 1% of the, the total fees, but I'm not sure what those numbers are.
Okay, 1% of the total amount received by the city for plan review, building permit fees, and use tax charged in connection with all private sale development, having anticipated construction costs $100,000 or greater, okay. All right, that was, those were the, my concerns, and, um, that's it.
We have a motion to approve item number five, it was seconded by Mr. Demott, please poll the council on item five.
Motion carries seven, zero.
Thank you. Ms. Davis?
Thank you. I move to approve the adoption of Resolution number 33-2012, a resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement with King Supers, Inc. for participation in the Enhanced Sales Tax Incentive Program.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve item number six, it was seconded by Mr. Starke, questions on item six? Please poll the council.
Motion carries seven, zero.
Thank you, so now we'll move on to item number three, we'll go on to ordinances for first reading. Item three is Council Bill number 11-2012, Mr. Demott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council Bill number 11-2012, an ordinance amending the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws, Chapter 22, Sections 22-67 and 22-68A, to clarify those entities which are exempt from use tax on building materials and supplies. Motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to approve Council Bill number 11-2012, an ordinance amending the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws, Chapter 22, Sections 22-67 and 22-68A, to clarify those entities which are exempt from use tax on building materials and supplies on first reading, order it published, and public hearing set for Monday the 9th, July 9th?
That's blank. Let me make sure we have that scheduled for July 9th, apologize about that. Yes, it'd be July 9th.
July 9th at 7:00 PM in City Council chambers, and that it'd take effect 15 days after final publication.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve item number three, it was seconded by Mr. Stites, please poll the council.
Motion carries seven, zero.
Thank you. Item four is Council Bill 10-2012, Mr. Stites?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to introduce Council Bill number 10-2012, an ordinance amending Chapter 26 concerning the planned development district regulations and private zone changes, and making certain amendments to Chapter 2 in the association here within case number ZOA 1201, is the motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to approve Council Bill 10-2012, an ordinance amending Chapter 26 concerning the planned development districts, regulations, and private zone changes, and making certain amendments to Chapter 2 in association here within on reading, first reading, order it published, public hearing set for Monday, July 9th, 2012, at 7:00 PM in council chambers, and that it'd take effect 15 days after final publication.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion for approval, seconded by Mr. Pond, please poll the council.
Motion carries seven, zero.
Thank you. We'll move on to item number seven, under decisions, resolutions, and motions, Resolution number 31-2012, Mr. Pond?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to introduce Resolution number 31-2012, a resolution approving intergovernmental joint cooperation agreement between Jefferson County and the City of Wheat Ridge regarding the formation of a home consortium between Jefferson County and the City of Lakewood. An issue Jefferson County and the City of Lakewood desire to create a home consortium to pool their federal home funds, combining the funds potentially makes more money available for projects in the urban county. The approximate amount of the pooled funds that would be available in 2013 is $700,000 to $800,000. Lakewood be, would first be given the opportunity to identify a project within their city limits using their share of the combined amount. If, within a certain period of time, they were unable to identify an eligible project, Lakewood's portion of the funding would be available for use in the urban county. This essentially doubles the amount of home funds available for projects in the urban county, since the county currently receives approximately $300,000, and the City of Lakewood receives about $400,000. Is the motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to approve Resolution number 31-2012, a resolution authorizing approval of the intergovernmental joint cooperation agreement between Jefferson County and the City of Wheat Ridge regarding the formation of a home consortium between Jefferson County and the City of Lakewood.
Second.
We have a motion to approve item number seven, it was seconded by Mr. Stites, please poll the council.
Motion carries seven, zero.
Uh, thank you, item eight, Mr. Renhart?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce a motion to approve RFP 12-07, insurance broker services to Insurance Management Associates, Inc., IMA of Colorado, on a commission-based agreement in the total amount of $72,000. For employee, for our employee insurance benefits, the city contracts with a brokerage firm to provide the following services, review of benefit contracts, solicit and negotiate rates for benefit plans, coordination with human resources, provide updated information and changes in regulations concerning benefits provided to public employees, evaluate and underwrite data for any changes in benefits plans, counsel, advise, and make recommendations to the Minut Services Department, Human Resources, concerning various applicable issues, and act as liaison to insurers when service problems occur. and act as liaison to insurers when service problems occur. Commissions are generated from the insurance premiums paid by the city and its employees. The contract, proposed contract expires in August 2012. Is a motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to award RFP 12-07, insurance broker services to Insurance Management Associates, Inc., IMA of Colorado, on a commission-based agreement in a total amount of $72,000.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve item number eight. It was seconded by Councilmember Jay. Discussion on item eight? Please poll the council.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Item nine was polled from the agenda tonight because we're not canceling July 2nd. So we'll move on to, and that concludes our agenda for this evening. So we'll move on to city managers' matters.
Thank you, Mayor. The fire chief and fire marshal are here this evening talking about the extreme fire danger in Colorado this year, and the police department would like me to reiterate that fireworks are illegal in Wheat Ridge, and those do include sparklers. The police department will have extra police officers working over the holiday, and we'll be taking a strict enforcement stance against violators. So please be considerate of your neighbors, and please be aware of the extreme fire danger as we enjoy our holiday this year. Couple other quick things. I'm very pleased to announce that the City of Wheat Ridge has received a 2012 ICMA Program Excellence Award. That's the International City County Management Association. That's for our Action Mission rollout, and this is under the category of strategic leadership and governance. The prestigious award is determined by a panel of 17 judges, and winners are recognized at the annual conference. So that included the Action Mission rollout video that we showed y'all a few months ago. And we also just were presented an award from CERSA at the CML Conference for our Law Prevention Award Program. This is the work that our safety committee and risk management staff works on that saves the city considerable amount of money on our insurance premiums. So I want to thank staff for their hard work on those two different programs. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Dahl, I think you needed to inform the council about the ordinance that passed, four to three earlier.
I do. The Charter, Section 5.9, requires ordinances to be adopted by a majority of the entire council, so that's a majority of eight. So a majority of eight is five. The particular motion passed four to three, which means that that ordinance did not pass. Ordinances require five votes to pass, and so therefore, if the mayor were intending to veto, pardon me, intending to veto that ordinance, veto wouldn't be necessary. It did not pass.
Oh, I forgot I had Tracy's proxy.
And I guess I wanted to-
Too late.
-let council know that it's either five council members or four, and the tie break on that for five, right?
In the circumstance where it had councilmember, I think, where they've been here and voted in a particular way, and we'd had a four-four, then the mayor breaks that tie, is required to break that tie, and the mayor's vote is considered the fifth vote. Charter's very clear on that. But we didn't have that circumstance. There were only seven of you here, and so that meant that five yes votes from individual councilmembers were required. So that didn't happen.
Thank you. That bit me about 15 years ago, if you remember.
You really will.
Thank you. Ms. Jayber?
I just wanted to remind folks how there's one more day to vote in the primary. Sorry. I just wanted to remind folks that there's one more day to vote in the primary. They can bring their ballots into City Hall in the clerk's office, and we will be open past 5 o'clock. We'll be open until 7 o'clock, so they can bring their ballots in up until 7:00 PM. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Starker?
I just wanted to express my gratitude to the citizens that showed up tonight to talk about the issues that we discuss here. I'm a proponent of significant citizen input, and I look forward to many more study sessions and council meetings with that input. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stites?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Saturday was a pretty good deal. We had the skateboard dedication, skateboard, whatever, what would you call it?
Skateboard park.
Skateboard park dedication Saturday, and it's a great thing. As far as I know, that basically finishes Discovery Park. The water features are going, and the skateboard park's going, and so that's a great addition to District 3 in the city. Would be a great time to relocate the Wheat Ridge. If you need any help, check with one of us. We'd be happy to do it. Positive thing this week, you gotta take care of these weeds. These weeds are getting pretty long, and you're gonna get nailed. So please try to help people. You know, if you have elderly neighbors or whatever, we gotta get those weeds taken care of, and as always, please try to find it and buy it in Wheat Ridge. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Davis?
I wanted to make a couple of comments about this evening, and actually, we had a lot of different issues that had similar tones to them, and I know it's the end of the evening, and we all want to get home, but I think it's important to say that I appreciate the feedback that I received, or we received, from the neighbors as far as the noise ordinance. And I think it's important, also at the same time, to respect the viewpoints of the neighborhoods as well as respecting our, all of our desires to support the businesses and the growth in their community. And I can look back, and I do have to comment that I do think it's important to remember that these are called special use permits and not everyday permits. And I think there are some very successful neighborhoods throughout our community. If you look at Old South Gaylord, Pearl Street, the Highlands, they all have business districts that are surrounded by homes, and there is a strong relationship with the businesses to support the neighbors and the neighbors to support the businesses. But I do feel that both viewpoints, and to be respectful of each is very important in the process. And I think the respectful of everyone in the process hits a few other topics we spoke of tonight, including the group homes. And again, from a council's perspective, to consider making accommodations for either handicapped, elderly, in group homes, and also respecting neighborhoods of the size and the amount of people in the homes, and trying to build a consensus with each party that both are happy with it. And I think finally is what John Marriott brought up, which was the smoking ordinance. And again, being respectful of the lifestyles that people choose. We might not all agree with them, but it might not always be public policy to set those rules in place. So I think an overall theme and thought for the evening is, from a council perspective, and I think citizen perspective, I think you always need to look at both sides of the coin and be respectful in the process.
Thank you, Ms. Jay.
Thank you also to the people who appeared here tonight. I welcome the citizen input, and if anybody would care to contact me, whatever direction you feel about these very important issues, be it smoking, or be it noise ordinance, or whatever, I do welcome your input and hope that the citizens feel that they are, their voice is being heard at our council, because I think we're trying very hard to do that. Thanks.
Mr. Pond?
All I had to say has been said. Thank you.
Mr. Reinhardt?
I had, the one thing I wanted to call everybody's attention to is there was an email today from Tim Ferrante on the cutting of bus services out on the west side of town again, and they're taking action tomorrow night at RTD, eliminating, still eliminate, well, they made some, I would call, modest accommodation of the 32 and the school hours and a couple of light commuting. They're still knocking out a big hunk of the bus service to the west side of town. And if council would like me to, I would be glad to go to RTD tomorrow night to testify, asking them to live up to the obligation they made in 2002 not to cut bus service when they turned on the light rail. And if council doesn't want me to, I believe there are better things to do. So is there, can, will council give me a consensus to speak on our behalf to oppose the elimination of bus routes on the west side of town? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Demott?
I have nothing to, I'm just kidding. I have one thing. I just want to remind everybody that tickets to the Zopee Family Circus are on sale now. There are 14 performances starting August 18th through Sunday, August 26th. If you haven't got your circus bucks, go to a Wheat Ridge business. I even saw these at the bank the other day, and this is a $5 off coupon. You can get your tickets at City Hall, at the Rec Center, or online at zopeecolorado.com, or thecarnationfestival.com. I'm sure there's a link from the city website, too. I just haven't looked. Not into the circus that much. That's all.
Mr. Demott, I would mention, when people bring in their ballots tomorrow, we have some circus bucks sitting right on the counter, and they can take them home with them when they leave.
I wanted to address a few things. I need some help from city council during the meetings. First of all, if, when you want to say something in a council meeting, kind of raise your hand so I can see, rather than just leaning into the mic, because I can't tell if you're gonna say something, or if you want to talk, or whatever. So please kind of give me a high sign, and then I'll know for sure that you want to say something in a council meeting. The other thing I'm gonna ask is, you know, Mr. Reinhardt brought up a valid point, you know, what was the procedure for the public comment tonight? And I was trying to answer it, but it's hard for me to answer when I have four other people jumping on the bandwagon on my case about what was said and done. So let me explain one more time what happened tonight. As the chair and previous mayors have done this, when you have 30 minutes for a study session, you have 10 people sitting who want to speak at three minutes each, council is not going to get a chance to speak and discuss an issue. So when I had talked to Mo and a few others, I said in the past, the chairs have said, pick a spokesperson, or combine your thoughts into one or two people, have your public comment for the study session, so council still has time to discuss an issue. Then, if you want, you can also speak under the regular agenda for public comment. Nobody was censured, nobody was asked not to speak, but I was looking for a common sense, sort of a logical way to get this through, because my concern is this. Staff, and Mr. Dahl, and myself, and Mr. Demott have worked fairly hard on getting this ordinance to work with the neighborhood and the businesses and the community, and based on the comments I heard tonight, even though we forwarded out the ordinance to Mo and a few others, they really didn't understand what this ordinance does or doesn't do. And we want to be fair to the neighbors and to the business owners and to everybody else. So I hope that on July 2nd, that we can get this discussed in a thoughtful, holistic manner, rather than focusing on one business on 44th or anything else. I mean, I know a lot of those folks, and they had volunteered not to say anything tonight because they wanted to hear what council had to say with staff and what was being proposed. There isn't anybody in the city that's supported more public input and public process than I have. In fact, I like to have study sessions all televised and everything else, but I've never been able to get that through. So just give me a chance here. My goal is to have efficient, fair, informative meetings for the citizens and for council. And what happened tonight, I believe, was that filibustering went on so that council couldn't have a thoughtful discussion with staff about this ordinance, and they delayed it, and that was their goal, was to delay it. So that's just my opinion. I'm not saying it's wrong or right or indifferent, but I support council having a thoughtful process. And I appreciate Mr. Davis raising the question, and I just wanted to be able to answer the question before everybody else jumped on me thinking that I had done something that I didn't. So. Any other, and I also, I wanted to thank everybody for going to the skateboard park. It was fun, the grand opening. We had a lot of kids there, a lot of adults using the skateboard park, and it went well. So like Mr. Demott said, we have our tickets on sale for the Zopee Italian Circus, so get your tickets now for the August shows. Where's Jerry?